Good evening, I make that five o'clock, so welcome to Children, Families and Communities. Mr. Amer, can I ask you to make the statement that you make at the start of the meeting, please?
Thank you, convener. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's Children, Families and Communities Committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you're speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting, or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate? Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I will now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you. As indicated, I will now take a roll call for the minute. I would ask that members confirm their presence when their name is called. Convener.
I'm here.
Councillor Alexander.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Anderson.
Good evening, I'm present.
Lord Provost Campbell.
Present.
Deputy Lord Provost Cordell.
Present.
Councillor Dawson.
I'm here.
Councillor El Nakla.
Present.
Councillor Flynn.
Good evening, I am present.
Councillor Lynn.
Present.
Bailey Roberts.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Rome.
Good evening, I'm here.
Bailey Sowers.
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short.
Evening, I'm here, thank you.
Councillor Smith.
I'm here.
Councillor Tolan.
Hi, I am here.
Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Councillor Crouchshank.
Present.
Councillor Finnegan.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor McHugh.
Present.
Councillor McIrvin.
Present.
Councillor Malone.
I'm here in the office and delighted to be here this evening. I'm present.
Thank you. Councillor Scullin.
Vivian, present.
Councillor Shears.
Present.
Bailey Wright.
Present.
Bailey McPherson.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Coleman.
Good evening.
Councillor Crichton.
Good evening.
Councillor Duncan.
Here.
Billy Scott.
Here.
Mrs. McBean. Mrs. McBean. I'll mark Mrs. McBean as absent. Mr. Abu Bakr. Mr. Abu Bakr. I'll mark Miss absent. Miss Barkley.
Present.
Thank you. Mrs. Javiet. Mrs. Javiet. I'll mark Mrs. Javiet as absent. Mr. Anderson McGinnis. Mr. Anderson McGinnis. I'll mark Mr. Anderson McGinnis as absent and that concludes the roll call.
Okay, thank you Veronica. Can we just move on to the first item of business, please?
Thank you. Item one, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations?
Okay, I'm not seeing any indications. Okay Veronica, can we move on to the next thing? Sorry.
Thank you, sorry. Item two, parent pupil religious and teacher representation on the Children, Families and Communities Committee. The committee's instructions are requested.
Okay, so there's several items here. So obviously the first part is the parent reps to continue as they were. Can this be agreed and noted? And as you will see, there are three members of the committee who are now no longer members of the committee, that's Mrs. Leck from the Catholic Church, Mr. Baxter from the teacher reps and I think it was Miss Cox as the pupil rep. And I think before we do anything else, I think it'd be good to put on record our thanks to all three for their contributions to just not just the committee but education in Dundee over the last few years and wish them all the best going forward. And for some, it's me leaving school and going on to other roles, others moving on to things more nationally, but we wish them all the best for the contributions. And I think it's noting that all three organisations will come back to us at a future time with nominations to go forward. So can that be noted? Okay, okay Veronica, can we move on to the next item, please?
Item three. Progress, follow-up levers destinations update and SQA results twenty twenty-three. This is for noting.
Okay, so Councillor Coleman, I see you have a question, so I'll pass over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Convener. It is good to see areas of progress and this is indeed a helpful report. I'd like to ask officers about the positive destinations data in chart one on page two of the report. In twenty-one, twenty-two, our positive destinations percentage was ninety-one point six and also Dundee's position, as the report alludes, is lower than the Scottish average. That should not be a surprise to us, given the city's position in SIMD terms in comparison with Scotland as a whole. However, what I do find surprising is a figure as lower than our comparator authorities, which has been the case every year over the past five years. I would have hoped we managed to at least equal this or hopefully above that average in some years. Have officers undertaken any investigation as to why this may be the case? And do officers feel that there's merit in looking to see if there are any initiatives in other local authorities that may be worth further exploration?
Okay, so I'll pass to Mrs. May in the first instance.
Thank you, convener, and thank you, Councillor Coleman, for the indeed important question. I'm going to hand straight over to Paul Fleming, our head of education, who's on the call because he's involved in a particular working group just now, task and finish group, looking at multi-agency approaches in this particular area where we're trying to, as you say rightly so, continue to drive improvement. We see some improvements, but we're never complacent and we want to see that getting even better. So I'll ask Paul to come in with some of the detail there. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey, and thank you, Councillor Coleman, for your comments and indeed the question. As Audrey said, we have high ambitions for all of our young people irrespective of their backgrounds. In answer to your question, yes, absolutely, Councillor Coleman, we look within the city, but we also absolutely look out with and pay close attention particularly to those authorities similar to us, the Scottish Eton and Challenge original authorities. One of the important things we did was we asked ADEZ, so that's the National Association of Directors and Education Scotland to come to Dundee earlier this year to work with us, to look at everything that we're doing in terms of policy, but also practice, to speak with class teachers, deputies head teachers across our city, to see where examples of good practice are, to make sure we're sharing them and to help inform our improvement plan. I alongside Glenn Lloyd, who's on the call, are part of a youth participation group, which is overseen by the executive director of city development and focused on developing a very ambitious plan to improve this measure further. As part of that plan, folks involved in the group Craig Strachan and others met and spoke with pupils, met and spoke with parents, staff across the city, but also investigated deeply other authorities such as Glasgow, who've just had some of their highest rates, to see where we could learn from others to help inform that plan and what details of that will come back to committee at a later date. Whilst we want to see improvements, what I would say is we've based on the data that's just come out, we're in the top fifteen in terms of the highest percentage increase in terms of improvement. Though we recognise this, Audrey says, we have a way to go and we're developing an ambitious plan to help improve that at pace, Councillor Coleman, and I'm happy to provide any further detail because obviously it's quite a big improvement plan in relation to this area.
Okay, Councillor Coleman, you happy with that response?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, just look at the chat and I don't see MDL wishing to come in, so can this report be agreed and noted? Okay, thank you. And I think that's Children, Families and Communities for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, convener. The next committee is the Neighbourhood Regeneration, Housing and Estate Management Committee. Good evening and welcome to the committee. Veronica, over to yourself, please.
Thank you, convener. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Councillor Short.
Thank you, convener. One of the papers today, I'm actually involved with one of the organisations that's part of the framework. I'm on their board, so I thought it better just to let everybody be aware. It's non-financial interest, but certainly wanted to put it forward as a conflict of interest in this occasion.
It's item two you're referring to. That was it. Yeah. Okay, thank you. That's noted. I see no other declarations, so can we move on, Veronica, please?
Thank you. Item two, property and housing maintenance and refurbishment framework. This report is for your approval.
This is to take on a new framework with Scotland Excel if required. I see, Councillor McHugh, you were first.
Thank you, convener. I have a question under item nine point one of the report. I note there's no mention of any consultation with the trades unions on this proposal. However, Labour Group understand that discussions have taken place and the position of the trade unions is that they have a workable agreement in place and don't expect work to be subcontracted when they have adequate resources in-house. They've received assurances that any work to be considered for procurement through the new framework will be first offered to the existing workforce as overtime. Can officers confirm that this is indeed the agreement reached with the trade unions? And that procurement of property and housing trades work using the new framework will only proceed where it cannot be undertaken using in-house resources on an overtime basis?
Yep, I can assure you the unions have been involved, but I'm bringing Louise just to confirm that.
Yeah, thank you for the question. And to confirm, this has been discussed with trade union colleagues. And just to confirm your point that this is a backup option where in-house resources can undertake the work.
Councillor McHugh, is that okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Crichton, please.
Thank you, convener. Just, yeah, just a question on, it's just a large delegation of funding awards kind of away from the transparency of tenders by public committee. And I think our group certainly is slightly concerned, to be frank, about the transparency of delegation of two million pounds a year. While frameworks, we understand are commonplace amongst all local authorities, we just really want to cast iron guarantee to this committee that is best value. And also, we want an assurance that there will be proper reporting system of awards actually made for elected members so we can actually scrutinise awards of this nature.
Yep, thanks for the question. I can assure you there will be some reports coming back with the progress that's being made. Again, I'll bring in Louise just to confirm that the framework is the best value for money. Louise?
Yeah, thank you for that, Councillor Flynn, and thank you for the question, Councillor Crichton. And so as the report sets out, there's been a competitive market and tendering process for this type of work across a mixture of small and large businesses. And part of the onboarding to the framework is the commitment around the national schedule of rates. In terms of delegated authority is up to that value of works and as I've just advised, the initial allocation of work will come via construction services and this is where those resources can undertake the work that will then utilise this compliant framework. And my understanding in terms of the report and is will be engagement with Scotland itself on a six monthly basis in terms of the review of the contracts that are being awarded and there'll be monitoring through the Albert Budget in terms of projected and actual spend which comes through to the government through the revenue for time.
Councillor Crane, is that okay?
Thank you. Yeah, I might come back to this, but I'll probably come back separate to committee.
That's me. Councillor Short, please.
It was just to pick on something that you did say, convener, with regards to if the framework is actually used. It might be quite useful if we had something in a number of months just to show where this is going. Is that something that can be arranged, please?
Yeah, I think Louise has touched upon that, where Scotland Excel will be feeding the backup for six months. So I think we'll be looking to bring the reports back on a continuous basis just to monitor this for the committee, based on that.
Thank you.
That's okay. Yep. Bailey McPherson, please.
Yeah, I just want to tape down that exactly that. Will it be reported to this committee? Are we saying there will be a report six monthly on any awards that have been made? I just think we need to be crystal clear on this. I fully appreciate frameworks are seen as the future and are all the rage. Bluntly, scar and housing blocks were all the rage at one time. And the concern that I've got about this is the transparency that appears to the public. Now, I'm not suggesting for a moment, officers aren't trying to achieve best value, but our concern, the Liberal Democrat group concern, is about the transparency in which this actually is undertaken. We're grateful for the assurances, I have to say, that Louise Bootshark gave to Councillor McHugh in respect to construction services and that is indeed a relief. But what we would really like is just it crystal clear is what Louise Bootshark's saying is that a report will come back to this committee each, every six months, listing what the actual awards were and for what work.
I think what, well, Louise speaks for herself. Go on, Louise.
Thanks for that, Councillor Flynn. And in terms of your question, Bailey McPherson, there's internal reporting around the six monthly expenditure, but I can bring my colleague Paul Thompson in terms of the annual reporting, which is my understanding around procurement contracts that then will be reported back to committee. So if I may, if it's okay to bring Paul in just on that point?
Yeah, Paul, are you on call?
Yeah, I'm indeed, convener. Thank you, Louise, and thank you, Bailey McPherson, for the question. So in relation to the annual procurement report, we have a requirement to report back to committee any regulated procurements that are those that are in excess of fifty thousand. And that report is completed and submitted to members on an annual basis. And we're happy to review the particular use of this framework within that report and provide any additional information in terms of the use of this particular framework if members would find that helpful.
Can you just confirm what committee, Paul, that you're referring to?
Sure. So the currently, the annual procurement report would go to City Governance Committee.
So that's your question, Bailey McPherson?
Not quite. I'm grateful to Paul for that response. It's only awards above fifty thousand. I'm not, I think this all comes down to transparency. And while as long as they are properly listed, everything above fifty thousand, I'm happy with that. Louise mentioned internal reports and perhaps, could we perhaps have an arrangement whereby awards under fifty thousand, in fact, all awards are circulated, if there are internal reports that each of the group leaders are given copies of these on a regular basis? I think that would help to ensure that we're all satisfied that the framework is operating in the way that we would want it to. I'm perfectly happy, assuming that's agreeable, I'm perfectly happy that we use the annual procurement report for, if you like, the public reporting.
Okay, Paul, so you've got your hand up?
Yeah, just to come back. So apologies, Bailey McPherson, I suppose what I was just trying to say is under the regulations, what we are required to report in that report, notwithstanding that we engage regularly with Scotland Excel, so happy to provide that information to members if they find that would be useful.
That's very helpful indeed, Paul, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. I see no other questions, so we'll just take a report as agreed. Thank you very much. Veronica, next, please.
Item number three, external wall insulation, Glen Prozen, Lawton and Llanthorn, phase one. This report is for your approval.
This report provides information on development and sourcing strategy to seek approval for the next phase of EWI to these particular locations. Number of properties will be covered by this and it's over five thousand properties we've done so far within the city with massive investment. So I think this continued work is only to the benefit of the residents themselves. See any questions on the report? I don't see any questions, so we'll just take that as agreed. Thank you very much. Veronica, please.
Item number four, internal wall insulation pilot. This is for approval.
It's quite clear what it says there, so I'll just come into Bailey McPherson.
Thanks, convener. My question, well, first of all, I make a comment, which although this has been a very long time coming, I've been banging on about internal wall insulation, specifically for the Logie estate, as officers know for a very, very long time. And I notice that, notwithstanding the very unusual spelling of Tullideff in appendix one, that the two properties in Tullideff are being included, which is good because there's one in particular where there have been really significant issues in relation to the warmth or lack of it, frankly, of the tenant's home. And my question's really around, because the pilots are welcome. I think Bailey Wright actually asked a very pertinent question recently about the situation regarding EWI as opposed to IWI. My understanding is that as internal wall insulation is more expensive and intrusive than external wall insulation, internal wall insulation will be tried only where the external version really can't be. Logie's a good example of that for historic and house construction reasons. And my question for officers is really around, where do we go? What's the intention going forward? Assuming this is successful, obviously I would like to see all our tenanted properties and Logie attended to as soon as possible. But what I would like to know is that will, over and above that, I think that's maybe the only estate officers will confirm that where the whole estate frankly would have to have an internal solution. But perhaps officers can confirm if there are any others. My understanding that the rest are houses where, for example, you've got an eight in a block, but an owner has said no, and as a result, that has meant that the whole block could not be done with external wall insulation. Now, there'll be quite a number of these dotted about the city. There are certainly some in my ward, the ones in Tullideff alluded to in the report are, indicate two of them. So I'm just really wondering if officers could give an idea of the scale of what's going to be required for internal wall insulation? And also quite keen that they're not at the back of the queue. But I'd be very grateful if officers could give a little bit more information as to where they intend to go on the assumption that this insulation pilot is indeed successful.
Thanks very much for that. Numerous questions in there. I think Louise probably covered most of them, I think, hopefully. Please.
Thank you, question, Bailey McPherson. So in terms of the other properties and schemes that are
I think we're finding it difficult, Louise.
Any other areas that aren't suited.
Louise, I don't know if you can hear us, but you're breaking up.
Technical issue, can you hear me okay?
Yep, let's try it again, yep.
Yeah, so what I was just saying there, apologies. And in terms of the other schemes that aren't suited to external wall insulation, I'm happy to share members, information with members around any other potential schemes in the city that aren't suited to external wall insulation. And you mentioned the two particular properties in terms of external wall insulation that they are suited to. And it's, one, we're looking at this pilot to trial internal wall insulation, but what's also ongoing is a review of the tenemental management scheme to inform what further actions we can take in terms of installing external wall installations where owners aren't supportive of that. So that's still being explored at this time. And if successful, would allow us to go down the route of external wall insulation. Alternatively though, what this pilot does offer us is where that opportunity doesn't arise, there's an internal solution that will benefit our tenants in terms of insulation and improving the efficiency of properties.
Bailey McPherson?
Okay, I'll not prolong this tonight. I'll look forward to Louise's update. And we can maybe take it from there, Louise, but I'm grateful for your reply. Thank you.
Yeah, I think everybody welcomes the fact that we're doing another option to try and see if we can actually benefit the difficult housing within the city as well. So that's quite important. I see Bailey Dawson's put apologies for declaration again, so thanks, that's noted, Bailey Dawson. Councillor Crouchshank, please.
Thank you, convener. Obviously, I welcome this pilot scheme for the, for the internal sorry, for the internal wall installation. Because for a long time, there are areas in my ward that are not suitable for the external wall installation. And I'm sure that will be highly annoyed when they hear that the West End is benefiting from the pilot. And you know, what I would say was, is when making decisions like this, that you teach, you treat the city with parity, there's a west and there's an east. And it would have been nice had the east been included in this pilot. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll just take that as noted. Okay, thank you. I see no more questions. So that, take that as agreed. Thank you very much. Veronica, next, please.
Item number five, tenders received by the head of design and property. This is for your approval.
Thank you. A number of tenders here, little upgrade to pilot, cut in, security light and Ancom place Marvin and wifi CCTV installation. Councillor Crichton, please.
Thank you, convier. Just a comment to say I really welcome the tender to renew the lighting at Marvin and Ancom. I've received comments from tenants about lighting and I know Bailey McPherson certainly has long before I was elected. So really pleased to see this and yeah, we'll see what happens going forward, but thank you very much.
No, thanks for your comments. Don't see any other questions, so we'll take that as agreed and that's the business for Neighbourhood Regeneration, Housing and Estate Management. Thank you very much. Thank you, convener. The final committee this evening is the City Governance Committee.
Good evening, folks. Well, we're on a roll. We will just crack on with the business. Willie?
Okay, thank you very much, convener. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest?
Declarations? Oh, yeah. Councillor Shears, Pete?
Thank you. BT are my employer and it's also fits within the armad BT that I work in. So I'll take no a pair apart in discussions at all on item seven.
Thanks very much, Pete. Understood. We'll take note of that and I see nobody else with the declaration, so we'll move on.
Yeah, thank you very much. Takes you on to item two, Minnesota Personnel Appeal Subcommittee of thirty-first of May and fifth of June. These are for noting.
Again, self-explanatory. Comments on these, no, can I take that as agreed? Thank you very much. Okay, Willie, back to you.
It takes you on to item three, Children Family Service Improvement Plan. You'd ask to agree the proposals?
So I'm sure you've all read the detail of the report and obviously this describes how all early years in childcare setting, schools and children's injustice, social work teams will contribute towards the priorities that we've all agreed in terms of the council plan and the city plan. And it's clear throughout this, I think, that there is a huge amount of ambition, but also thoughts around how we continue to try and improve the lives of every single young person that's going through those services.
The plan also focuses on addressing inequalities in health and wellbeing and attainment in the context of those UN development goals, and of course, the rights of the child. And I think it's really important to recognise the amount of work that's underway and the resource that goes into providing those services. The report also sets out that there will be a six monthly progress report to committee, which I'm sure everybody will welcome, so that we can continue to monitor and look at the delivery of that progress that I think collectively across the political spectrum, we've all very much signed up to wanting to see as well. So there's a number of questions that have come in. I'll just go straight to those. So councillor Coleman first, Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Convener. On page thirty-seven, the performance indicator for free school meals envisages a nine percent increase by 2035. That's a pretty ambitious target, and I'd be grateful if officers could outline the position now as opposed to twenty-one, twenty-two. And if they are confident the target will be met or exceeded by twenty twenty-five, and the steps the service is taking to promote meals to improve uptake.
Thanks very much, Daniel. Yeah, or perhaps defer to Paul in the first instance on that. I don't know if he'll have all the figures to hand, or perhaps in his brain, but Paul?
Thank you, convener, and thanks councillor for the question. I don't have the exact figures to hand for this year, but certainly I can get those and provide them. There's a number of steps taken place to improve the uptake of free school meals. For example, making sure that we get off to good habits and good patterns in the early years and involve parents in understanding the quality and the provision around free school meals. We work very closely with TESI contracts. We've lots of schools trying to improve the whole dining experience for children, and also listening to feedback from children about free school meals and why they are taking them or why they are not taking them. So working closely with the appropriate manager, we're developing an action plan in partnership with TESI contracts to help us to achieve what, you're right, is an ambitious target for free school meals. But given the quality of the meals and given the cost of living crisis, we absolutely would want our families to be taken off their entitlement of a free school meals. But as I say, convener, I'm happy to provide any further detail if that's helpful.
Thanks, Paul. I think that would be Daniel, you happy enough with that?
Yes, thank you, John.
Grand, thanks very much. And I think just to add to what you were saying, Paul, there is a lot of work that's underway to continue to promote free school meals across all of the age groups. And I think we are continuing to see uptake increase, although it's never quite where we want it to be. And there's part of me that thinks we perhaps should use the clip of councillor McHugh at the last committee meeting as a fantastic passionate advocate for the school meal quality. So I think there is some good work underway to continue to promote that and hopefully improve the rates as well. Councillor Crichton next, Michael?
Thank you, convier. Just a question in terms of the performance indicators on page thirty-seven. And the targets by twenty twenty-seven for the improvement of CFE levels in literacy is fifteen percent is the aim. And kind of what steps are taken to meet this target, and it's a quite significant target, so are officers confident that they will meet it?
Thanks for the question. Paul, go to you again.
Thank you, convener. Thank you, councillor. There are a lot of steps that have to take place to improve the curriculum for excellence levels because it's the sort of attitude of everything that young people do around literacy and numeracy in particular. And some of those are similar between the primary and secondary sector, but some are different. For example, in the secondary sector, what we absolutely have to do is work across the board on and developing practitioners' understanding and application of the learning, teaching and assessment cycle in primaries, as well as looking to have improved the universal quality of learning and teaching. We're working very closely with Jody who's on the call as deputy of our pedagogy team to provide targeted support to individual schools who perhaps aren't where we would like them to be, to provide that additionality around enhancing so that we see that significant increase that we reference in the report, councillor Crichton, at peace. So lots of very specific individual school actions. We expect each school to do a contextual analysis and to really clearly outline in their school improvement plan how they're going to improve what we refer to as the three Ps. So presence, progress and participation of all children, young people. And we expect them to report regularly to their parent council and their parent forum about what they're doing. And we have some very specific citywide actions as well, which are outlined in this plan. But in addition to that, and well, again, we're happy to provide further detail, we'll have very specific action plans sitting behind this to really set out how we're going to improve that attainment.
Thanks, Paul. You happy with that, Michael?
Yeah, it's great that we have ambitious targets. Just, yeah, we need to know how we can meet them, but sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bailey Keenan, Kevin. You're on mute, Kevin.
Yep, trying to get off there, sorry about that. Couple of questions. One in relation to how do the officers see the plan progressing or hindered with the fact that we're sitting at about a two million pound overspend in children's services at the moment? And I'm wondering if they could make a comment on the seminar that was run the other day, I read in the press about bullying, because obviously bullying will be something that affects the child at the school, no doubt affects the family and parents and children will be interested in, you know, what strategies we're bringing forward and running across the rest of the authority to make a difference for people. So I'm sure that, you know, if you're getting bullied, then that learning experience isn't going to be very good, and perhaps the outcomes of resulting in ultimate results for that child would be worse than the potential it could be. So I'd be interested to hear what the strategy is having, what was going to roll out from there.
Thanks for the question, Kevin. I'll go to Audrey Meehan in the first instance, and thanks also for highlighting the anti-bullying work as well. I think that's a really important part of the overall approach that children and family services are taking to try and tackle those issues at the root. So Audrey.
Thank you, convener, and thanks Bailey Keenan for your question. I'll pick up the better plans and the overspend as it sits just now. As has been explained as part of our revenue monitoring in the past, a lot of that pressure on our budget is around care experienced young people being placed externally to Dundee. I'm delighted to report that even in the last two months, we have no young people in secure accommodation anymore, because they've all come back to the city. And in total, over the last two months, we've brought back eleven young people to Dundee who were placed externally in care. So that's the journey we're on, and we'll continue to try and give a probably a more optimistic projection of our budget because we have to, the way we look at our accounts in the current situation, we project on where we are just now, but we know if we continue doing the work and carrying out risk assessments and really, you know, intensive plans for young people, we will be able to bring a lot more back to the city over the next few months. And so we hope we will see that coming down in the future. So hopefully that budget pressure will be sorted out over the next few months, but which is really important in terms of managing our budget. But what's even more important is we're bringing Dundee's children back to Dundee. And for us, that's a main piece of work and a main ambition in the children's services side of our business. So hopefully that will mean that we won't be hindering the development of our plan and delivery of our plan because the budget will come into balance. The Anti-Bullying Conference the other day was something that we celebrate because we want to listen to the voices of young people, which is, you'll clearly see is one of the important strategies in our service plan, that we want to build on the voice of young people when they tell us what matters to them and their families and the community, and also to hear about their experiences and therefore work out what we need to do as a service to continue to support them. But I will ask Paul Fleming to come in just briefly because he did attend that conference on behalf of the service. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Andre. Paul?
Thank you, convener. Thanks, Bailey Keenan, for the question and comments. You're absolutely right. It's really, really important that all of our young people feel connected to their schools and feel safe, healthy, happy, and that they can achieve in their schools. We talk about make sure every young person feels that they are loved, that they're loving and lovable. As Audrey said, one of the key features of our plan is not us assuming what we should do, but listening to the voices and listening with a view to improving. And the young people very clearly want to talk about bullying. We're very aware that nationally, there will be work taking place around relationships and behaviours and a number of summits organised, but we didn't want to wait until that time. So we worked with our young people to plan the Anti-Bullying Summit, which was attended by our deputy convener, by Respect Scotland, and by parents across the city as well as staff and pupils, to listen to their experience of bullying, to look at the data. And we saw from the health and wellbeing survey, Bailey Keenan, and indeed our own data collections, that there is a mismatch. So one of the things we absolutely do is to really create that culture where young people and staff feel safe and secure in coming forward to talk about instances of bullying and that they responded to immediately. This work will help inform our strategies. We're doing some work with our union colleagues around relationships and behaviour, and this work with the young people will help inform that strategy. We finished the session last time with what was called an expert panel. I don't believe we were, but it was on the panel, but we flipped that and put the young people on the expert panel, and they were all very, very confident and very, very positive about the session, but most importantly about how they felt that that was the start of the action plan being developed with them, Bailey Keenan, to ensure that we reduce bullying. It's not acceptable to say that happens everywhere, happens everywhere. It's important to know it's happening in our schools and it shouldn't be. And we want to work together with children, with adults, with families to reduce and to stop that. So you're right, young people can focus on learning and developing these in forward.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks for that.
Thanks. Councillor Malone next, Charlie.
Thank you, convener. Reading the report, the report is obviously making suggestions of how we can improve in a lot of the areas related to education. And like councillor Crichton and Coleman before me, I look at some of the indicators on page thirty-seven. Actually, I look at all the indicators on page thirty-seven, and they seem to me to be hugely ambitious. Now, I'm not against having these targets, I'm not, I hope we meet these targets, but they are hugely ambitious to the point of almost being aspirational. Given the context that we understand education to be in just now, you know, with the unrest amongst teachers, strikes, we've got the post-COVID era still to deal with, and the kind of things like bullying that we were talking about. I just felt that the paper was light on context, but high on aspiration. And I think there needs to be some mechanism that brings the two together to say, yeah, we understand what the context is. This is what we are setting ourselves as targets, and this is how we think we could manage them. And I think that would be helpful in the sense of the documentation. Other than that, just to me, when I read it, I just went, it's just aspirational. There's nobody telling me how it's going to get done.
Thanks, Charlie. I'll bring perhaps Audrey in in a second, just to offer some response. So I think you're right, we need to recognise that we do need to be ambitious, perhaps even aspirational for our young people. I think it's really important that we continue to lift our gaze above where we currently are and think about where we need to be. And we know that there are huge challenges. We know the demographic challenges, the social inequalities that exist in every single one of our communities. And we know that we're resolute in our determination to tackle all that as much as we possibly can. And there's some excellent work that's underway, not just by children and family service, but through the support and activities of the Fairness Leadership Panel, some of the work in terms of the Pathfinder that we were discussing at the last committee meeting in Llanthorn, to look at the totality of the family, not just through educational means, but all of that supports the outcomes that we're looking to deliver on. Just on your point about monitoring and context, I think, again, not to speak for officers, but within this, the recommendation is that there's a six monthly progress report. Within that, I'd be expecting the exact progress, sorry, the context that you're asking for, so that we're looking for not only the progress against statistical figures, but understanding some of the contextual analysis that sits behind that and the realities that people are facing. And I'm sure officers will reflect that in the report six months henceforth. But Audrey, not to speak for you, I'll bring you in at this point.
Okay, thanks again, convener, and thanks to councillor Malone. I suppose just that, yeah, absolutely, supporting being aspirational and ambitious for our children and our young people. And I suppose we're not going to make any apologies for that. That's what we want to do. Also, some of these reflect our stretch aims, which are over a period of time as well. So we're working towards over a few years, some of these ambitious targets. The context, I think, just, I suppose I would want to just reflect that this is a high level plan. And underneath this high level plan, there's lots of delivery plans and action plans that give more detail. And if it would help in any way for members to hear more about some of that context and individual action plans that sit below some of these work streams, happy to organise briefings or provide more information going forward, that would be easy to do. So that might help. But absolutely, yes, and we will bring a more detailed progress report in six months too. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Audrey. I think I probably speak for all elected members, but I think, again, we all recognise how much work and also the challenges that are facing the services generally across the board and recognising the amazing commitment of staff across the board. And just to take you up on that offer, I think probably a briefing session for all twenty-nine elected members, a couple of dates, would be really helpful just to go through that and allow us the opportunity to perhaps, you know, ask some other questions and get the information. So thanks very much for the offer. I'm sure we'll all take that up. Charlie, you okay with that?
Yeah, convier, can I just come back very, very quickly? Just to say that nobody's got any question about the ambition or aspiration, right? Everybody wants, and you said it yourself, convier, everybody wants the best for our children in terms of education and other areas as well. And a lot of work's been done in the city, and it's too much work that's complex to be enshrined in one document. I just found that the targets were just a little bit devoid of context. And Audrey, you've mentioned that you'll deal with that, and there's other papers that deal with that. I just felt it would be more instructive for us, because people do ask us these questions. And if we say, yeah, we're going to get this, this is going to be the level, let us say why, and they'll say, how are you going to do it? You go, oh, I don't know, because it wasn't in the paper. So totally supportive of everything that's done in the schools. Everybody knows I'm a great champion of education, a lover of education. And I would not question in any way the work that you're doing, Audrey. I just like to see a wee bit more detail, that's all. But don't expend yourself too much. Because we'll be around till twenty twenty-five, most of us. Some of us might not be here in twenty twenty-seven, but we've got plenty of time to get something going forward.
Thanks, Charlie. And I think just recognising that work and also that there is ambition. And I suppose that's often the challenge with a committee meeting rather than perhaps the briefing session, because we do see frequent reports looking at different aspects of the service. So, you know, relatively recently, we were looking at the attainment report, which was setting out some of that context. But I think your point is that there are various documents related to that activity. So we'll make sure in the update report that it reflects some of that context. So thanks very much for the question and the comment. We'll go to councillor McHugh next. Dorothy?
Thank you, convener. I have a question, but first could I have a wee point of clarification? You've said that we will get an update progress report in six months. Will that include where we are against the targets, you know, if there's been any movement from the baseline towards the targets?
Oh, I'll not speak for officers. So Audrey, do you want to come in and answer that? Thanks.
Where we can, yeah. Sometimes in the calendar year, it doesn't always exactly marry up with the school academic sessions. So where we've got targets that we can report on, absolutely, we would do that, but we might not have them all. Thank you.
Thank you. And now can I have my question, please? Again, it relates to the indicator measures on page thirty-eight, the last two. Reconviction rate and average number of reconvictions per offender. The targets are higher than the baseline. And I don't quite understand that. Does that mean that we've already exceeded the target?
Yeah, I'll bring in Glenn in the first instance, just to comment on those stats. Glenn?
Yes, thank you, convener and councillor McHugh. I suspect that is a mistake. Actually, this is probably a typo. What I can say, though, is that within Dundee, we have a better performance rate in relation to both the reconviction rate overall and the reconvictions per offender than the national average. And we've been moving in the right direction in that regard for a number of years now, despite the demographics in the city. So it is a typo, but we can revisit that and we can look at that and can make sure that the target is actually accurate and exceeds what the current performance is showing at the moment.
Okay, they might just be in, you know, in the wrong columns, you know, round the wrong way or something. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll make sure that's circulated to all elected members, just to get absolute clarity. So thanks very much for the question, Dorothy. And I think that is the last question. So can we take this report as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Okay, Willie, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Yeah, thank you very much. Item four then, before he's a budget strategy report, you're asking your recommendations.
I think this report kind of speaks for itself. We all know that there's huge challenges in terms of public sector finance generally, particularly for local government. And I think over a number of years, we've all worked collectively to continue to beat the drum for local government and particularly Dundee City Council when we look at some of the challenges that we're facing in the medium term outlook strategy as it's set out. I think it's also worth saying that within this report, as we've seen in previous years as well, there's a lot of work that's gone into pulling it all together, all the various threads to make sure that we are appraised of the current situation and where we are anticipating things might go, of course. A slight emphasis on the word might, because we can never cast our eye into a crystal ball and necessarily get an accurate picture. But this gives us an indication of where we might well go. So what I'll do is I'll I'll come to questions first, and then I know that Willie has an amendment, so Bailey McPherson.
Thanks, Convena, and as you alluded to, it's challenging times, as it has been for quite a number of years. And obviously, an estimated shortfall is alluded to in seven point one of some nineteen point five million is hardly good news. My question, however, is around the consultation. Now, a specific question for officers, I raised last year the fact that when consultation took place, I had two points. One was really around face-to-face consultation as opposed to just an online thing. And I was wondering if officers have given any consideration to making that a wider consultation? For example, involve the LCPPs or or whatever. So that's my my first point. My second question really is around an assurance that, around a question I raised last year, in fact, eleven months ago, October twenty two, which I raised with the communications manager, in the so-called consultation last year, you were given the choice in response of, did you want a council tax increase of three percent, four percent, or more than four percent? But not to indicate that you weren't happy with anything as high as three percent. And I certainly made the point to the communications manager that really, if you're properly consulting people, you have to give them the opportunity to say exactly what they think, not what you want them to think within some parameter. So I was given the response saying that would be considered for the consultation for twenty four twenty five. And I would just be grateful if I could have some assurance that that will indeed happen, so that we have something that is a bit more akin to total consultation and that people aren't given a very limited number of options as to which to choose in relation to the level of council tax increase.
Thanks for the question, Fraser. I'll I'll go to Robert, just to say, I suppose, and add to what you're saying there. I think we clearly want to have as widespread a consultation as as possible with the public. And I I had a very recent meeting, I hosted a meeting with the Pensioners Forum, Dundee Fighting for Fairness, and the DFTA, the Dundee Federation of Tenants Association. And again, they were very keen to to lean in and support the pickup of that consultation. So clearly, we do absolutely want to have the views. Robert will be able to answer some of this, but I I would hazard a guess that it might also be useful to get some feedback from Steve Bell from the Communications Team, although he's not on the call this evening. So we'll go to Robert, and then if we need to pick up any other aspects, we can do so. So Robert.
Thank you, Convena. So as it happens, I'm meeting with Steve Bell tomorrow to have a look at communications. So thank you for your comments, Bailey McPherson, I think we'll take them, we'll certainly take them into account. Certainly, your comments on council tax from last year were noted, and we'll feed them in. And and the purpose of our conversation tomorrow is to make sure we provide the best opportunity for everyone to contribute. So we're going to have a look at the formats that we can use and how we can engage. So if anyone else has any further suggestions, please do let me have them, and and we'll reflect on that, and we'll let we'll let members know what we are doing so that everyone has the the most opportunity to contribute towards the work we're doing, Convena.
Okay, could I could I just come back on that? I'm I'm grateful for Robert's reply, and I'm grateful that we'll get some feedback. It would be useful to have that feedback before any consultation goes live, obviously, and I'm sure that's what Robert has in mind, but I'm I'm most grateful for his reply. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Fraser. Okay, what I'll do is I'll I'll go to Bailey Scott, and then we'll come back to your amendment, Willie. So Derek?
Thanks, Convena. It's it's very depressing getting this report every year and seeing how much we're going to have to cut the the budget by, and it doesn't get any, never gets any better. My question is, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I want to ask about public consultation as well, and the ability for our residents to perhaps be consulted on specific proposals. We get the, any savings or cuts you intend to make, we normally, in least in previous years, we've gotten quite a bit in advance of the committee meeting, and it gave people the opportunity to consider the proposals and be represented if they still wish to make a deputation at the at the budget meeting. And in the last few years, the time between getting the proposals and the budget meeting has got shorter and shorter. And I realise a lot of that is out of your control, because a lot of last minute decisions are made by the the Scottish Government. But it really would be helpful if we could get those proposals a bit earlier to allow the public to to have a say on them. And I'll give you the example of the cut that was made to the five subsidised bus routes. Sometime after the event, Convena, I sent you a an email with petition that had been signed by a number of, well, nearly all of the the tenants at the the sheltered housing in Fort Hill. They would have liked the opportunity to have spoken to the committee in advance of the decision being made, so that they could put their their views over. And maybe some members might have changed their mind, having heard from the users of the service. And it was only a small amount of money, and a saving might have been found elsewhere to allow that to continue. So my first question is, if at all possible, can we please allow some of the the specific proposals to be looked at by members of the public in advance of the meeting and give them the opportunity to to make their views known? And my second question is regarding what I read in the section on page three about local taxation, and it talks there about you you might look at the opportunity presented by the proposed visitor levy. Now, I I'm against that for a whole number of reasons, and I won't go into that just now. But just to ask you if you're minded as an administration to to bring that in. I'd like to have your your views on that and 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 ask you not to even think about doing it until Dundee is well and truly embedded as a as a visitor destination.
Thanks, Derek, for those couple of questions. I'll take them in in the order that you asked them. So first of all, on consultation, I I'm always keen, as much as I possibly can be, to provide as much information in the public domain and to the opposition groups as far as in advance as we possibly can. And you've alluded to the fact that that's incredibly challenging, because every year we're we're being guided and and waiting on figures. And I think it's fair to say from an officer perspective, any base budget adjustments are given as soon as they are compiled and provided. And I suppose I would put the the challenge back to to all of the political groups, not just my own, because I think it's incumbent on all of us. Although I appreciate that the opposition generally will work from hours. I think it's incumbent on all of us to to practise, as you were preaching there, in terms of giving as much advance notice of all of the budget decisions as much as we possibly can, because, you know, it's not just scrutiny of the SNP administration, it's scrutiny of all of us as individual political politicians and individual political groups that I think is really important. So for for what it's worth, Derek, I'm more than happy to kind of have dialogue with all the opposition groups and to continue to work to see if there are areas of common focus or compromises, the case may be. Because I think we all recognise how challenging the situation is. It's been challenging year on year, and I was reflecting in a conversation recently that I've now been a councillor for circa eleven years. I've not seen a budget where I've had ample money to spend, I suppose, and I know that's in contrast to some of the more established members of this committee, I'll put it in a a nice way. So you've got a commitment there, I'll happily work with the opposition to make as much as we possibly can in advance of the committee. But I can't, I can't obviously give any guarantees in that respect. On the latter point around local taxation, so I need to reference, I suppose, another conversation that's been taking place. So with my hat on as Chair of the Scottish Cities Alliance, what we have been proactively doing, as you would expect me to do as leader of Dundee City Council, is to represent the voice of local government and the cities specifically, in terms of giving us additional levers, both over legislative powers as well as taxation, to make the decisions closer to those that we represent. And that is a position I would hope that broadly speaking, everybody would be in agreement with. Now, the practicalities of that might mean that there will be individual proposals that you wouldn't subscribe to. But I think the essence of what we're asking for, which is more power devolved to local government, is surely something that we all agree with, irrespective of the practicalities of each of those proposals. And there is work to be undertaken on transient visitor levy or tourism tax, whatever phrase you want to use. In principle, I'm supportive, but I think what we need to do is we need to have that broader discussion and obtain the figures that will be able to allow us, I suppose, to make a decision based upon facts. So what I'm not going to do is give you a guarantee that I would rule it out, but I'm also not going to give you a guarantee that we'd bring it in. Because at this point in time, none of us have the contextual information, going back to Charlie's point, to make an informed decision. So I am broadly supportive of it, but I would like to see the detail, I'd like to see how it would work, I'd like to see how much it would also generate, and how we might use that money to actually improve the services that are delivered, not just for locals, but also for people visiting the city, as is per the regulations. And I think we also need to be very mindful that all thirty two local authorities, to varying degrees, will be looking at these powers. And what we also don't want to be is an outlier. Given the context within this report, what we're very clear on is that there is a financial challenge that is upon us, and we need to look at every single avenue to try and close that gap. And you used the example of the bus routes. Well, one way we might be able to mitigate that some of the decisions like that that we have to make is by generating additional income. So if you're asking me to rule out potential avenues for income, what you're asking me to rule in is more detrimental decisions when it comes to the budget. And I don't think anybody would expect any leader of any council or political group to do that without the information that we require to make an informed decision. So I'm happy to continue discussion on that. I know that as a point of principle, you disagree, but I think what we need is the information to make an informed decision, and we can have that debate at the appropriate time. Derek? Could I just come back on something, Convena? It's just regarding opposition budgets, I'm more than happy for my proposals as I bring them, as I prepare them to be to be shared for everyone. I don't mind it being scrutinised at all, but it's it's your budget proposals that will always carry the day, because you've got the majority. So they're really the ones that the public need to see and 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 make comment on. And the opposition groups do need to see your budget in advance as well, before you see our budgets, because we may want to mitigate against some of your cuts. And we can't do that until we see what you're proposing. So ours will always be delayed, and and they'll always be delaying receiving ours until we get to see what is you're proposing first. Yeah, no, and I acknowledge that that is the process that you normally go through. And I would just say that any early site would be more advantageous to some years where we've been presented with proposals on the day. Now, I would also go back and just say one final thing, which is that just because we've got a majority does not mean that we will not engage with the opposition. And you know, as you are one of the groups that engaged with me very proactively and very kindly, I suppose, when we, when I certainly became leader of the council in twenty seventeen, that we will incorporate ideas where it's appropriate and where it is, where we are able to do so, and where we believe they are the right thing to do. And we did the same, I remember, with Liberal Democrat groups. So there is no monopoly on ideas. I'm happy to engage with you, whether that be over a coffee or teams or in person in some other way, shape or form. But the reality is, you know, we will try to bring forward our proposals in advances, in as much in advance as we possibly can, and engage with the public well in advance of that. So thanks very much. And I'll come to Bailey Sawyers now, who has an amendment. Willie?
Yeah, thanks, John. Maybe just a couple of quick comments about consultation processes before I move on to the amendment. Bailey Scott has remarkably been on the council even longer than me. And she will remember the days under previous administrations where budget proposals were literally tabled on the day. There was then a recess to allow opposition members to go away and come up with some sort of alternative to that. So I hope he'd acknowledge that, else it might not be absolutely perfect. The situation we have now is far advanced from what we had several years ago.
Willie, just now you're speaking, sorry, I was just going to say, can committee services please circulate the amendment? Thanks.
It was just a way to ask for that. So the first thing I'd have to say with the amendment is I do not claim exclusive authorship of this. I have to admit, I went back and tweaked ever so slightly a Labour Group amendment from a year ago to a similar report. So I'd be hoping it's pretty self-explanatory. We should write to the Prime Minister and the First Minister and closing a copy of the report, setting out the need for a more generous financial settlement and hoping that we might alleviate the need for some of the savings that are quoted in the report. As I say, very straightforward, I don't intend to say a lot about it. And, oh, that's me, Willie. I'm going to be very brief tonight, John.
No, it's gotten into you, Willie. Thank you for your brevity this evening. So, I mean, I will clearly support and second this. I think it's really important that we are proactive in the approach now. I I know that all elected members will recognise that in the background out with committee, I and my colleagues are always banging the drum for local government, not least Dundee City Council, to try and ensure that we are as best placed as we possibly can to deal with the huge range of issues that we're contending with. And I think it's also really important to recognise how much of our budget also mitigates some of the impact that we've talked about. So, you know, if I think back to my days as Deputy Housing Convenor, back in the the glory days, I suppose, of twenty thirteen, when Jimmy Black was the Convenor, and the bedroom tax and the introduction of that, we are now mitigating to the tune of two point six million pounds per annum. A hundred and seventy eight thousand pounds on the mitigation of the bedroom tax, four hundred and sixty one thousand pounds on the core DHP funding. So I think not only are we trying to address the issues that we know are alive and well here in the city of Dundee, but we're also trying to mitigate other impacts and other decisions taken elsewhere, and we need resources to be able to do that. And I think that's why we need to be very proactive and hopefully unanimous in taking that message to both UK and Scottish government, because we cannot continue to mitigate the decisions of others. We want to be able to deliver growth, we want to be able to deliver on the aspiration that we're talking about in previous plans as well. So hopefully, in that vein, we can all agree with the amendment proposed by yourself, Bailey Sawyers. But I will bring Fraser in next. Fraser?
Thanks, Convena. And unlike yourself, I don't know what's gotten to Willie either, in the sense that this is well written, consensually written, and our group is happy to support it. Thank you, Convena.
Thank you also for your brevity, Fraser. Okay, I can see no other comments, no other opinions being expressed to the contrary, so can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, please, Willie.
Good, thank you. Page one thousand five, Cosla, the Scottish Government Council Tax Consultation, you're asked to give you the recommendations.
I knew it was too good to be true. So I I sense there may be some differences of opinion in terms of the approach that's being taken. I don't intend to dwell on that too long. I think it's important to recognise that even within all of our respective groups, I'm sure there's differences of opinion and certainly a spectrum of thoughts around the approach that we take. But in light of the report that we've just considered, I think it's really important that we recognise that there are only a few ways in which we can seek to strike a balance. And nobody is saying that the suggestion within the consultation is perfect. I think we'd all, certainly I would, rather see that wider review of council tax and and looking at a localised income tax. That isn't going to solve the immediate challenge. And I think there are ways and means in which we need to consider how we generate some income that supports the important council services that we're discussing tonight, whilst also trying to, as much as possibly within the the current setup, distribute some of that wealth and then related comments. So I will open it up to, I think, we'll do questions first, and then I'll come back to amendments. So councillor Duncan Craig, if you can ask a question first, and then I'll come back to you in the first instance for your amendment, once we've dealt with the other questions, please.
I'm much obliged, Convena. Yeah, a spectrum of views, I think you're quite right. So my question, the way to officers is, you know, should these proposals be carried tonight? Have officers sought or indeed received any assurances from the Scottish Government that if the council tax were to be increased in the way it's proposed, that there is no chance, no danger that at future point in time, the Scottish Government will simply reduce what it gives to local government?
And I think those views are being, will be expressed, are being expressed, have been expressed very strongly through Cosla as well. So I don't think that that's a suggestion, but certainly I'll come to Robert to provide an officer perspective. Robert?
So thank you, Convena. So I I think the best example that we've got is when the multipliers were revised in twenty seventeen, where that was additional money for local government. Clearly, it's a matter for Scottish Government how it decides to distribute funding. But previously, the funding that was raised by change to the multipliers came to local government. I suspect that it's obviously a case of the government thinking about the funding available at its hands to support public services in Scotland. So I suppose I can't give an assurance, I can certainly assure you that that's a matter that local government officers have raised as a matter of importance with Scottish government officials.
Okay. I think, yeah, I think, Mr Eamonn, that's as far as you can go. I was just keen to establish that, you know, as far as Dundee City Council is concerned, because I'm also involved with Cosla. But as far as Dundee City Council is concerned, the officers have indeed pressed for such assurances insofar as you can.
I I think Robert will give an affirmative to that, but I can also say politically, I would give an affirmative to that. I don't think any of us would want to see the the council tax go up in this way. I don't think any of us would want to see the council tax go up in this way if there wasn't going to be a material financial benefit to the council in terms of the services we deliver. So I think as much of an assurance as we can possibly give there, Craig. Kevin, you've got a question. I'll come back to your amendment, as I said, Craig. So I'll come to you next.
Yeah, perhaps Mr Emmett could confirm, if we got to keep the money in 2017, did council still have to make any cuts? Because someone paying, I believe that year there was a 2.5% increase in council tax in general. So if someone on a band H received their 22 and a half percent, they got a 25% increase. Did council make any cuts that year to, to reach a balanced budget? And is it envisaged that perhaps next year, even if there was that level of increase again, that there would likely still be a number of cuts needed by council?
I'll bring in Robert in just a second. I think you know the answer to your question, but I'll, I'll ask officers to respond in the first instance, looking backwards. I think looking forwards is a harder one for officers to predict. Obviously, we've just discussed the medium term strategy document that sets out what we anticipate might be the situation, but it's not cast iron. But Robert, I'll let you come in.
So thank, thank you, Kavina. I think members will be aware, we've had to find savings every year, certainly since 2008. I suppose the consequence of additional council tax might have reduced the level of savings that were found in 2017, 18 budget on the, on the, on the back of that.
Thanks, Robert. Kevin?
I'll, I'll leave it at that and go to the amendment.
Right, okay, no worries. Right. So Craig, we'll come back to you for your amendment, please.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Kavina. I wonder if officers could maybe circulate the, the, the thing and I'll, I'll talk to it.
Thank you. Do that.
So if that's happening, okie doke's, you'll be pleased to, to, to learn. I will not detain you long because I'm mindful that others have got amendments and stuff. But basically, our group is quite genuinely shocked at just how out of touch these Scottish government proposals are at this difficult time for households. And where we, we oppose the council's proposed response to the consultation, which actually supports the tax hike. Let's bear in mind, you know, we've sat here, all of us at committee several times and talked about, you know, cost of living crisis and so forth. I don't really see how it would assist hard pressed people to be hit with the actually additional taxes in such straitened times. The impact will be really, you know, adverse to some like 4,421 households in my ward in Broughty Ferry, but also in other wards, the impact is still significant and highly detrimental. We're talking about 936 households in Strathmerton, 926 households in Maryfield, 849 households in Wally. And let's remember that council tax bears no relation to the ability to pay. And I once again want to belabour the point that we're in a cost of living crisis and a lot of people will genuinely struggle to find extra money. This, this, you know, these proposals would be very much the last thing they need. The report highlights that this hike would take somewhere 2.36 million pounds out of the Dundee council taxpayers' pockets. The proposed increases per household in Dundee would range from somewhere £146.48 a year for band E to a whopping 819.39 for band H. And again, it's, it's during a time of a self declared cost of living crisis. You know, sure way, this is simply unacceptable and not something that any of us can support. I'm quite happy to say that my councillor, my colleague councillor Craig will second me.
Thanks very much, Craig. I'll bring Michael in now. Michael?
Thank you, Kavina, and more happy to support councillor Duncan's amendment. I'm like my colleagues, I'm generally angry. I'm not usually angry at things, especially when they're central government, because in overall local councillors, there's no point getting into political fight over these kind of things. But it does affect our constituents. It affects nearly 2,500 households in my West End ward, 2,413 to be exact. And it's just something I seriously, I don't seriously think you or anyone else could think I could support this. Could go into history saying SNP would abolish the council tax, but I genuinely think all parties need to get round the table and actually say, what is local government for? What should we deliver and what do we need? And actually have a, a policy platform from the Scottish government and the UK that comes to local governments and actually provides to them. And it's genuinely insulting. And what this will do is it will just hike up people's bills, but services will be reduced. And that furthermore, the anger that's out there in politics in general, and I'm sick and fed up. I've been a councillor for over a year now and just hearing the anger towards politicians. And what we need is ideas going across the parties from the SNP, from the Conservatives, from us, from Labour. And it is genuinely insulting. And as a West End councillor, I certainly won't be supporting this. We need new ideas, refreshing ideas. And for the amount of people employed in government circles to come up with something like this after all that time is a joke. So I certainly won't be supporting these tax hikes and I will second councillor Duncan.
Yes, thanks very much, Michael. I've got a couple of other amendments to come. And just by way of, I suppose, initial comment from my own perspective. I think what's clear in the conversations we're even having tonight, so I've already been told that we shouldn't look at tourism tax. Now we're being told that we shouldn't look at increasing council tax in the form that's taken. And I would remind all of us, I suppose, in some senses, that unless something significant changes, then the cuts that are going to be proposed will be significantly greater. And you just said yourself, Michael, that services will be reduced. Well, they'll be reduced to a more significant level if we don't have a mechanism for increasing the level of income coming into Dundee City Council. So what we can't see is politicians, as we've seen over recent months, profess that they would reinstate X, Y and Z. They would safeguard X and Y and Z, or they would bring forward new proposals that are not only uncosted, but not able to be delivered in the medium term, given the financial situation. So I think it's a reminder and a reality check for all of us that we can say that we're going to rule out every aspect of increasing income to the council through whatever form of taxation. But if that's the case, then what we're going to potentially see is a larger number of cuts across a larger number of services. And I think that's just a reality that we all need to face up for. And I don't think it's, I don't think any of us can really say that we are going to be able to deliver everything that we said without recognising that there is a need to change. I would make one final remark, which is that this is a consultation. And within the consultation response that officers have pulled together, what it also recognises is some of the challenges that the households would face, including the potential for looking at council tax reduction as a mechanism to support those people that finds themselves in a difficult position. So I think, again, trying to strike the right balance of recognising that we are trying to find more income to prevent the decisions that you've just alluded to, whilst also trying to make sure that there is an element here of recognising that for a number of people, there will be an opportunity to generate some income for council services to support those council services. So with that, sorry, I will move on to the next amendment, which is Bailey Scott. Derek? And if I can ask, committee services just to display that as well, please. Derek, I don't know if you're on mute. Oh.
Yeah, sorry, Kavina. I've got to get my masterwork. So, yeah, I don't agree with the, the proposal either. And we all accept that the council desperately needs more income to deliver essential public services. And we heard that in the, in the last item. But I think it's wrong that households should be asked to fill a huge black hole in council finances caused by year after year of chronic underfunding of local authorities by the Scottish government. In my own ward, 47% of householders, 47% of householders in Broughty Ferry will pay more as a result of this change. And that's far more than in any other ward. And over one million pounds more will be raised from the ferry ward. And residents will rightly ask me what they're getting for it. And the answer is, well, nothing. There won't be any additional services. If we have a nineteen and a half million budget short or full for the next financial year, they're going to be paying more but getting less as a result of, of that. And it's not the case either that those living in higher council tax bands are wealthier during a global cost of living crisis. Many homeowners will not be able to, many householders won't be able to afford such an extensive tax hike, tax hike. And the funding of local government needs to go beyond just tweaking the multipliers. And this is just another poor attempt by the, the SNP green government to fix a mess that they've made themselves by persistently underfunding local government. Even the, the, the Scottish government's information centre have said that the local government budgets have not kept pace with the growth of the Scottish budget over the last 10 years. And I totally agree with you, Kavina, that we should contact whoever we can to try and get more income from the council, whether that be the UK government or the Scottish government. But I don't think that households should be asked to pay more to cover the gaping hole that's been left in our fund, in our budget as a result of underfunding from the Scottish government. So we do think the Scottish government should finally give Dundee the funding deal it requires. And that's why I brought forward this amendment to your motion tonight, Kavina.
Okay, thanks, Derek. Before I offer a comment, I'll just check. Does this have a second up? It does not, Derek. I know you'll want this noted in the minutes.
Could I have it please noted? Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks very much. Can I offer just a quick comment in a sense? Like, none of this is easy for any of us, given the financial challenges that we know are there and coming. But I think it's really important to reflect and remember the context. And I'm going to say it again, a reality check. So none of us want to increase tax and all of us want to mitigate every single decision taken by Westminster, as I've alluded to, in terms of the five million pounds that we currently spend. We also want to mitigate any potential avenue for any decisions that might reduce services in the city. Well, something's got to give. We can't continue to claim that we're going to be able to reverse any decisions or take a different approach unless there is additional income. And sometimes that additional income will need to come from taxation. And, and we're all very keen, I think, well, most of us are, on the distributive wealth. And I think that's absolutely key to the approach that we take going forward. And if you think about the timeframe that was alluded to by our officers earlier, the banking crisis is where this started. The austerity agenda, which was taken by your party, was the starting point for the decline in public services across the board. Now, I'm thankful about the fact that no council in Scotland, touch wood, has gone bankrupt. That is not the same position that they find in England, where councils have had to be put in special measures amalgamated or saved from the very last very difficult situation that they found themselves in. So I think it's important to recognise, and again, that reality checkpoint about we can all claim to be against council tax rises, but if you stand there and be against this, when push comes to shoving the budget and you're claiming that you're having to make decisions that you're not supportive of, we've got to recognise that there are multi, well, multiple elements that make up the budget, including, yes, Scottish government resources, yes, the council tax, but also income generation. So I'm going to stop there because I'm going on a wee bit of a tangent, so apologies. And I will come to Bailey Keenan, who has an amendment. Kevin?
Well, obviously officers can circulate the amendment and obviously hope that perhaps there'll be some level of agreement with at least opposition councillors on, on a way forward. And indeed yourself, Kavina, because the last one was about writing to the first minister and looking for a better settlement for Dundee. My motion obviously attempts to do that as well. You'll see by the motion that, you know, I highlight the fact that we're having to, we've had to make £157 million worth of cuts for 2008. And I suppose that goes back to the time where the SNP were promising that council tax would be abolished, that it was an unfair tax. And we're now in the deepest possible cost of living crisis. And yet again, as happened in 2017, the soft mark is go for a few big houses and obviously look for them without any indication as to whether these people have got the money to pay or not. And, you know, you mentioned earlier about the unfair bedroom tax. This is a bit of an unfair bedroom tax because you may well be asset rich and, and, and quite poor and below that by way of disposable income. I mean, I think that, you know, we've got to look at how we best address things. And I would see that if council tax goes up based on the last paper of nineteen million pound, this will still mean that individuals could potentially pay twenty odd percent extra in council tax and yet again see cuts where in 2017 they've seen eighty two million pounds worth of cuts there. And it's great that you continue to blame the Tories for everything. And it's only this year that you've said, we pay better wages. So you've delivered the council tax freeze, held wages down, delivered the Tory austerity, but you delivered it with an SNP manner. So that, you know, you'll need to rethink exactly how budgets are come up with. And if you look at the moment, we would just be looking to ask, ask to address some of the incompetencies of the Scottish government. When you look at the ferry's fiasco, ninety five million pound a start fee, now four times the cost at three hundred and forty, the last guess, ridiculous that we're having to pay, we're having to pay that. Then circularity Scotland and Piffa Waste, Piffa Waste making a claim against the government for sixty five million quid because of a deposit return scheme that's done. And obviously then we'll look at hospitals that can be opened because of the ventilation systems within these hospitals. So the people in Dundee are asking to pay more. If the Scottish government still want to keep council tax, then they should reband every home. There is no indication as to whether there's wealth in the bands that are there or not. It's just another unfair tax. So ultimately move against it. And, and as I say, if there's a way for me to work with other groups to deliver a motion that's more acceptable, I hope that that covers most of it, other than the prepared to write to Katie Hagman at Cosley as well to, to, to highlight the fact that we've had to make far too many cuts. Dundee's just neglected. It's not on the radar, the government, and it's just delivering cut after cut that we can't afford to take. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, I'll bring in councillor Creek Shank before we go to other comments and bring in my own. Georgia?
Thank you. I'll not leave by the point. I mean, most of what's been said covers it. So I will formally second your version. Thank you.
Thanks very much for the brevity. I think that there's a couple of things I would want to say in response. So I go back to the comments that I've already made. Everybody's really good at saying what they wouldn't do. I am in any alternatives coming forward. Now, the proposal is, I'm sure Bailey Keenan will know in terms of rebanding, which I'm not against, will not be in a position to be taken forward for the next budget. So what he's suggesting, as is sometimes the case, is to defer, dither and delay on a proposal that would generate income. So essentially in agreeing what is set out in this motion, we're saying that we are happy to go along with whatever settlement goes forward in the knowledge that based upon our medium term financial projections, it will be challenging and will have no mechanism for generating additional income other than the council tax bands that we currently control. And therefore we're going to be in a position where we're probably making greater cuts to services when there are other avenues to explore to generate income. I just don't think that is realistic. I think it's also worth recognising that whilst there will be political differences and I very much support a local income tax and continuing to work towards that end. But Labour used to be the party of redistributive wealth. And I think what we've seen recently as well, I think it was Rachel Reeves said that a Labour government wouldn't introduce a mansion tax on expensive properties. It wouldn't raise capital gains tax. Keir Starmer has moved away from his commitment at UK level to increase the 45p top rate of income tax. And I'm sure that makes some members of your own group incredibly uncomfortable, given that the Labour Party seem to be trying to out Tory the Tories. And the reality of what we are facing, and I go back to this, what we are trying to propose here or suggest in supporting what the officers have said to a consultation which may not land in the way that has been set out, is trying to strike the balance between income generation, mitigating impact on services and generating income at a time in which we all recognise public services are stretched across the board. And so it's only through that kind of pragmatic approach that I think we're going to find a way of at least trying as best as we possibly can without all of those powers to, to mitigate that broader context that I've alluded to. But with that said, I will come to Bailey Sawyers next. Willie?
Yeah, thank you, Kavina. Bailey McPherson commented on my speech in the last debate that it was, I think he said it was maybe quite consensual. I'd have to say, I'm afraid that consensus might crack a little bit. I wonder, just by the way, if committee services could take down the Labour amendment, just so as I can see some more folk. Thank you. so as I can see some more folk, thank you. I don't say this unkindly, and I hope Kevin doesn't take it personally, but rarely have I heard so much rubbish in such a small space of time as Kevin's speech just a couple of minutes ago. Yeah, I think you've hit the nail on the head, convenor. You know, if we could freeze the council tax, increase services and mitigate all the bad things Tories were doing, we'd all be happy. Or maybe, you know, Scott might not be happy about us mitigating the bad things the Tories are doing, but that's another, another debate for another day. And it's very easy to say, oh yeah, let's just write to the Scottish government and ask for more money. So the more observant of you will have noted that the amendment I moved in the last report included the Prime Minister because there are enormous constraints on funding the Scottish government receives. So if we write to the Scottish government, are we to say, well, let's take money away from health to get to local government, let's take money away from justice to local government, let's take money away from transport to local government, or are we just to find a magic printing press? You know, that's the kind of I hesitate to use the word dishonest, but it's people in politics not facing up to hard choices and not trying to fool the public that there's easy solutions out there, which there aren't. Can I just mention two particular things? The Whiteman amendment referenced our manifesto promise from 2007 to scrap this council tax, and that is quite great, that was a manifesto promise. We were, as people will remember, elected as a minority government. I suspect getting that through parliament would have been difficult enough, given the parliamentary arithmetic at the time. But the thing that completely torpedoed that was that many of our constituents across the whole Scotland rely on council tax benefit due to their, their income. And the Treasury at the time said, if you don't have council tax, you don't get council tax benefit, therefore the whole scheme collapsed. So there is a complete refusal of the Westminster government at that time to even look into that notion and work with the Scottish government to try and make that feasible. We hear time and again from unionist politicians, oh, the Scottish government should be working hand in hand with the UK government to do X, Y and Z. Well, we went at that time to the UK government with a proposal and were just told no. Reference has been made to the deposit return scheme. Well, there's another example. It's hardly a hugely radical, dangerous idea to be saying, if you take your bottle back to the shop, you'll get £10 back, or whatever the figures are, and it might cut down on litter and increase recycling, you know, what's not to like? Yet, when the Scottish government come up with plans, UK government, and I see Michael Crichton sort of shaking his head, oh, that's, that's the reality of the situation, Michael. If you don't like it, maybe you should go and have a word with Alistair Jack, who seems to be on the same sort of political parallel as you. So the bottom line, convenor, is if we want more, better services, we need to pay for them. Is this an ideal solution? It probably isn't. Is it a solution that will bring us more money next year? Yes, it is. Do we need more money yet next year? Yes, we do. Well, in that case, let's get ahead with this and let's not have people sitting around saying, oh, it's going to bring in untold hardship for people. We have reference in the response to the consultation that we need, we may need to develop the council tax hardship scheme so that if people do fall into a bit of difficulty, we can help them with that. So let's be realistic, move forward and stop the crocodile tears, please.
Thanks, Willie. Come to councillor Tolan next, Siobhan.
Thank you. Yeah. Would, would I want, would I want a local income tax? Yes, absolutely, I would. But as Willie pointed out, I mean, this money can actually go into our coffers next budget. That could pay for a lot of hardships that we're trying to mitigate. I just want to pick up though on the conversation that seems to be happening around the council tax proposal itself, kind of language like all households will be affected, you know, not everyone lives in a, you know, I think it was Kevin had said asset rich, cash poor, those kind of things. I just want to clarify a wee bit. This is, within the confines of what we're doing, is a progressive taxation. It is taxing the richer in order to try and keep and protect services for the poorer of our population within Dundee and within Scotland. I'm blown away that Labour don't see it like that, I'm going to be absolutely honest. But I want to give a little bit of a fact check. So what I'm going to say is, yes, there will be some people in the higher tax bands who will struggle with the additional cost of this, okay? The council tax revenue, the council tax benefit that's given, should hopefully mitigate most of that. But I'm going to give you a little bit of statistics, and this is in terms of band A right through to band H and income. So 39% of people that live in band A get council tax benefit. That is in comparison to band H, which is 0%, band G, which is 1.48%. So what we have is a situation, yes, it's not completely nuanced in the sense that everybody from band E up doesn't require, cannot, can't afford higher council tax, and not everybody in band A to D can afford council tax. But what you get is a literal visual example of the lower income that you are in, the lower tax band you will be in, and the higher tax band that you move up into, the lower, the higher income you will be in. And I'm going to give you just another statistic as well. I'm going to do it very quickly, and this is the Scottish government's council tax band analysis, okay? So this is compiling income composition according to the council tax band. 71% of those in low income sit in the low council tax bands. That's compared to 74% of people in higher income sit in the higher council tax bands. So what we are actually talking about is, in general, people in higher income do sit in higher council tax bands. Wait, and I'm going to go back to John, I'm going to go back to Willie, where does the money come from? We have massive problems in our economy. We have massive, massive amount of poverty, massive amount of hunger. I would much rather, I would much rather tax those in asset rich and in the main, higher income families and households to actually give some of that income to protect our public services and to feed those that are hungry. Now, we can, we can mitigate some of the people. If you look at the council tax reduction scheme, it is based on income. It's not based on council tax bands, it's based on income. So if people in low income and high council tax bands do meet that criteria, they will be subject. And as John pointed out very early on, there is a kind of, there is a, in the consultation, they're talking about trying to tweak that in order to make that fairer. But we have to start redistributing wealth somehow, and we have to start with progressive taxation. And I think that this is an opportunity for us to actually begin to do that a little bit.
Thanks very much, Siobhan, for that. And I'll come back to, Fraser was next, according to my list, and then Nadia, and then I'll try and bring things to a conclusion. Fraser.
Thanks, convenor. I don't intend, I think we've given this a good airing, but I don't intend to make this particularly lengthy. But I would just simply gently say to the administration group, and I heard what councillor Tolan in her defence of the progressive nature of council tax, which is frankly simply not the case. Do you know there are 347 people in the bands concerned already in receipt of council tax reduction? And I think that gives you an indication of the broad, the problem with council tax is it bears absolutely no relation to ability to pay. It's simply based on a valuation of your property based, actually, I think I'm right in saying six years before councillor Crichton was born. So I think that gives you an indication as to just how old of date it is and how it bears no relation to the ability to pay. And I do also gently remind the administration, you've been in power for 16 years. You were elected in 2007 on an agenda of reforming and abolishing council tax and having a reform of local taxation and local income taxes. Never happened. Councillor Tolan says she would like it. Well, you've, you're currently with the Greens, actually have a majority in Parliament, you've had a majority in your own, without the need for the Greens, you had a majority in 2011 to 16, as I recall, and it's never come forward. Now, this is an attack on the administration as such. This is a, a point that fundamentally, we are tinkering at the edges and hammering households in these bands because the grasping of the nettle, which is a proper reform of local taxation, has not taken place. The problem we have with the Labour amendment, if we're being honest, we agree with a, a, a great deal of it. We have a problem with the, if the council tax is to remain, because it's like giving up the ghost, you know, agreeing to a, what is termed a reevaluation, I presume, a revaluation of council tax. But we are of the view that there's a real need on the part of Scottish government to reach across the aisle to all the parties and to really look at a proper reform of local taxation. Because I think anybody looking at it fairly would say that council tax is not a progressive tax. And now that doesn't resolve the issue before us, I simply come to the point that thousands and thousands of Dondones will be affected by this. As I say, the, the, the whole point about council tax not being a progressive tax and not being related to the ability to pay makes this not a progressive suggestion at all. And for that reason, I support councillor Duncan and councillor Crichton. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Fraser, come to councillor El Nakla next. Nadia.
Yeah, thank you. I'm surprised by some of the things that I'm hearing. Of course, an overhaul of council tax would be amazing, the cost of that, and as you all keep saying, a cost of living crisis would be phenomenal and a huge, huge exercise. This is something the consultation is looking at to mitigate £700 million of Tory cuts, £700 million. And what the government is trying to do is to raise money, to give it to local authorities to mitigate the cuts that we, the local authority, are facing. Nothing is ideal in this, and this is what drives me mad, because we are all leaders and yet no one else has came up with a solution, a comment that can go in the consultation to say, actually, this is a consultation, it's asking my thoughts. I don't think this is a good idea, but you know what else would be really good? X, Y, Z. Nothing. Instead, it's the discussion to not raise any funds. We were not elected to be popular, we were elected to make difficult decisions. And what I keep on seeing time and time again in this chamber, this virtual chamber, is the reluctance for other parties to make really difficult decisions. So it's a consultation, it's your opportunity to bring forward to the administration what it is that you think should happen, instead of just slamming it down as being useless. And some of the things I've heard, the fact that like, oh, people will pay more, but they won't get more services. We provide brilliant statutory services. We do amazing plus additional stuff that we constantly have to be cutting, but our statutory services, we just heard about the education system. So don't try to play down the council that people get nothing for their money because they do, they get good services, and we want to continue that by mitigating the £700 million cuts, by generating money for the local authorities. Thank you, that was it.
Well said, thank you very much. Nadia and Kevin, and then I'm going to try and bring this to a conclusion. I don't know, Kevin, if you want to respond, I think Fraser had a suggestion in terms of your amendment.
Just in relation to Fraser, Fraser, the only reason I've left it there is I don't believe that the Scottish government's got an idea to come up with anything else, given that there has been about three or four different commissions that have came up with basket ideas, endless people that they've involved in looking at whatever the alternative may be, and I just don't think they've got a way forward. And they're now a government that have completely run out of ideas and just are hitting the buffers at everything they do. Everything they do is a disaster, and here we are with another one. And, you know, you mentioned in consultation, and, you know, we've heard them, this is a consultation, but it's a consultation weighted and giving them the result that they want. Very much the point that you made, Fraser, and picked up in relation to how the council have tried over the years to do with this.
Okay, thanks for those comments. I think we've, we've given that issue a fair airing, as others have said. And I think the reality is, if members of the public, I suppose, were able to view proceedings tonight, or at least consider the balance of what we've got to consider as a council, going back to some of the previous comments, it is not an acceptable position for any politician of any political party to say that they want to mitigate and prevent cuts to services, whilst also saying that they don't want to generate any income from any measure being proposed. And it is fairly ridiculous to be in a position, year on year, where political parties, and I've mentioned a couple today, are backing away from proposals or thoughts around how they might generate income, whilst also claiming to save the world. The reality is, and members of the public will see through some of that kind of transparent narrative for what it is, we're taking a position which is trying to strike the balance, which is pragmatic in its nature, whilst also recognising it's not a perfect solution. And I think every member of my administration who's spoken tonight has been very clear that this isn't necessarily the panacea, but it's one mechanism for us generating income which prevents greater cuts to services. And that's what I thought we all wanted to see. So with all that, I think we'll move to the vote. I'm going to propose, as the motion, the paper and the response that's within the paper. Can I have a second, please? Bailey Sawyers. Oh, you're, you've muted yourself again, Willie.
Sorry, half a second, yeah.
Thanks very much. Okay. Can I hand over to Roger to talk us through the vote to make sure everybody's clear on what we're voting on? Roger.
Thank you very much, convenor. The motion in the name of councillor Alexander, seconded by Bailey Sawyers, is approval of the recommendations in the report. There are two amendments before the meeting. The amendment moved by Bailey Scott, having failed to find a second, that will however be recorded in the minutes. Taking the amendments in the order that they were moved, the first amendment on which a vote will be taken is the amendment moved by councillor Duncan, seconded by councillor Crichton, which is as earlier circulated. I'll now pass over to Mr Wardle to take a roll call vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Okay, Willie.
Okay, thanks very much, convenor. With that procedure now explained, taking to the votes, and firstly, convenor.
Motion.
Councillor Anderson.
Motion.
Thank you, Lord Provost Campbell.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Curdell.
Motion.
Bailey Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Nakla.
Motion.
Councillor Flynn.
Motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts.
Motion.
Councillor Rome.
Motion.
Bailey Sawyers.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion, please.
Thank you, councillor Smith.
Motion.
Councillor Tolland.
Yeah, I have a motion.
Councillor Bailey Keenan.
Amendment.
Councillor Crichtank.
Georgia, you're on mute. I think we didn't quite hear you the first time, sorry, Georgia.
Sorry.
Councillor Finnegan.
Amendment.
Councillor McHugh.
Amendment.
Councillor McCarvin.
Amendment.
Councillor Malone.
I have councillor Crichtank without her mic working, so, no, I'm for the amendment.
Thank you, councillor Scollin.
Amendment.
Councillor Shears.
Amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson.
Amendment.
Councillor Coleman.
Amendment.
Councillor Crichton.
Amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
Yeah, currently gives you 15 for the motion and 14 for the amendment, the motion's currently carried. Taking you on to the next division, and that would be the proposal submitted by the Labour group. So, convenor.
Motion. Motion.
Mister Aliza- Anderson.
Motion.
Lord Provost Campbell.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Curdell.
Motion.
Bailey Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Nakla.
Motion.
Councillor Flynn.
The motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts.
Motion.
Councillor Rome.
Motion.
Bailey Sawyers.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion, please.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Councillor Tolland.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Amendment.
Councillor Crookshank.
Amendment.
Thank you, councillor Finnegan.
Amendment.
Councillor McHugh.
Amendment.
Councillor McIrvin.
Amendment.
Councillor Malone.
The amendment.
Councillor Scullen.
Amendment.
Councillor Shears.
Amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson.
The amendment.
Councillor Coleman.
The amendment.
Councillor Crichton.
Amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
It gives you 15 for the motion and 14 for the amendment. The motion's carried. That now takes you on to item six, provision of insurance cover. Should ask you the recommendations.
Yeah, hopefully this is self-explanatory, but if anybody has any questions, now's your time. No, can this be agreed? Thank you very much. Willie.
Yeah, thank you. Takes you on to item seven, Scottish wide area network replacement. You'd ask you the proposal.
Again, hopefully relatively self-explanatory. Any questions on this? Nope. Can I take that as agreed? Thank you very much, Willie.
Okay, thank you. Item eight, Dundee IGB performance and strategic planning developments. You'd ask you the recommendations.
Obviously, this is a substantial report and it highlights two reports that were recently approved by the Dundee Integration Joint Board, which are significant in terms of their interest to the council and obviously as one of the partners in the Health and Social Care Integration Scheme. It's really important that we've got a mechanism for reporting that back. Of course, we do have elected members that sit on the IGB as well to articulate views and represent the interests of the electorate. I think it's also really important to recognise that there has been a huge array of challenges facing services, but also that services have really risen to the challenge, challenge in a number of different ways. And this annual performance report concludes reporting against the IGB strategic plan, which took us from 2019 to 2023. And obviously, there was some significant challenges in that timeframe. But I think it's helpful for us to continue to see these reports coming back and recognise both the progress and the challenges that have been made. And I, I think it's important to say as well, as leader of the council, I'm really pleased to make that commitment to that continued collaborative working with the IGB to support them to deliver the ambition and the priorities and also recognise the strategic shifts that are taking place in some of that work as well. And I can see there's a couple of comments, questions, so I'll just come to those first. I think I'm right in saying that it was Craig first. Craig?
Thanks, convener. Yeah, I'd like to say, I mean, there, there's, there's a lot of good stuff in, in the, the, the reports. And that's fine, but on the other hand, you know, there, there are some items of considerable concern. Something that jumps out at me personally is, I'd make reference to page 81, talks about the life expectancy figures in Dundee. Unfortunately, it makes really quite grim reading. You know, we've got the second lowest life expectancy in Scotland, but worse than that, life expectancy is actually decreasing by two whole years for males and 18 months for females in the seven years between 2012-14 and 2019-21. Obvious, obviously a step in the wrong direction, very concerning indeed. So this is worrying and actually in all honesty, it's, it's shocking. So I do recognise that whilst, you know, deprivation, you know, does lead to very often the undesirable health outcomes and life chances play huge, huge part in this. And why officers to outline nevertheless what steps are currently being taken to improve this for every, this depressing outlook for every citizen of our city.
Thanks very much, Craig. I'll, I'll come to Vicky Irons, who's on the call in just a moment. I think it's probably worth recognising that there's a role for all of the key partners, so IGB, but also in the services that we provide in trying to address some of those issues. Because as you say, it much relates to social inequalities that then have an impact on health outcomes, et cetera. So there is that kind of connection across all of the work streams, some of which sit within the IGB and some of which don't. But Vicky, I'll let you come in.
Yes, thank you, convener. So obviously, the inequalities forms one of the first priorities in the refreshed strategic plan. It's actually the first that's named. I'm also joined tonight, convener, by members of the senior team and officers. So I don't know if any of my colleagues would like to make specific comment on the work we're doing around inequalities. We have Catherine and Diane and Dave also on the call.
See them all coming on, so I'll leave it in your capable hands to respond.
Um, convener, happy to come in?
Thanks. Yeah, go for it, Diane.
Yeah, thank you. So I think there's a number of things which we're looking at in relation to life expectancy. Obviously, we're doing a huge amount of work in relation to our drug and alcohol services to make sure that we're responding to people as crisis appears and actually taking the work that's there. And that's reflected through some of the performance. But we also have a number of services which are working in communities. And I know that having been at a few of the LCPPs recently, recognising our health and equalities teams, particularly our community nursing and the work that they are doing in the, not community, our health and equality nurses, sorry. The work that they're doing in communities to ensure that we reach some of our most vulnerable people who might not otherwise engage with statutory services and even tend to be the people who delay in going to their, their GP, who are actually reaching out to them and ensuring that we can support them. There are a range of kind of supports that are going on. For example, the recent introduction of the Community Wellbeing Centre called Hope Point. It's already demonstrating that we're having quite a significant connection with communities and individuals who are pitching up at our centre in order to seek support and quite often coming back from multiple interventions and, and levels of support. So we're looking from our position to try and tackle and support it from every angle that we can, whether that's in communities, whether it's in the delivery of services or whether it's specialising and looking at those targeted services where we know that people's life expectancy can be quite significantly impaired because of mental health or substance use. So trying to tackle it on a number of areas, councillors and, and, and doing the best that we can. I think the other approach that we need to take going forward is in relation to how we work across families. And we've been working quite closely with our Children and Family Services to ensure that we're looking at prevention, but also that we're taking whole family approaches and recognising generational issues that are coming through. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Diane. Craig, you happy with that response?
Yeah, can I just come back briefly just to say thanks, thanks to officers, you know, for, for all, all that you've said. And I mean, I'm not underestimating by any means the, the scale of the problem or, or the huge and positive work that officers are actually undertaking. And you mentioned Hope Point, for example, and I was glad to say that I, I was able to have the opportunity to actually tour around the facility prior to its opening. And I think from what I hear, it's already making its, its presence felt in a good way. So very glad about that indeed. And just, I mean, I'm, I don't like to speak on behalf of all colleagues, but on, on this occasion, I think no one's going to object if I say that, you know, in terms of trying to reach out to people that might be not, not, you know, always coming forward to services. I think if there's anything that we as elected members can do and the work that we do, the contacts that we have to help you to unite with these people, I, I'm sure that I speak for all of us that would all be more than happy to do so.
Thanks very much, Craig. Certainly, I'm, I'm sure you do speak for all of us when it's, when you say that. So I will come to, I think, Dorothy next.
Thank you, convener. I have a comment rather than a question. I'm really pleased to see the publication of the, the annual report and the Plan for Excellence brought to council. Although I have one or two wee reservations about the use of the word excellence in the title for reasons mostly contained within the Health and Social Care Needs in Dundee section. That's pages 81 to 84 of your bundle, I think already alluded to by councillor Duncan. I would urge all members across the chamber to read these two documents in full. And you can find them on the Dundee Health and Social Care website and to pay particular attention to the section on Dundee's Health and Social Care. Read for yourself the very serious and significant challenges facing Dundee Health and Social Care Partnership in making real improvements to people's lives. I'd also draw member's attention to the section within the Plan for Excellence on Risks of Delivery, Risks to Delivery, sorry, page 20, 125 of your bundle. Many of these relate to pressures on financial resources. It will be a long, long road to achieving excellence. And considering the current financial constraints that the council and NHS T side are under, no guarantee that will ever be reached. However, there is one area of this work where the use of the word excellent is entirely appropriate. I must congratulate everyone involved in the development of these documents. Huge improvements have been made in producing these reports in a format and language that is clear and easily understood to the people of Dundee. This indeed is excellent work.
Thanks very much for your comments, Dorothy. I'm sure they'll be appreciated by the team and taken back as well and reflected. And, and great to hear in terms of those compliments and on the information that you've received and the structure of the reports as well. So thank you for your comment. And I'll come to Kevin next.
Yeah, just obviously councillor Duncan's prompted me to ask the question. Again, perhaps in a different way, because life expectancy is something that has been extremely low in Dundee for a number of years. And for it to be moving in the wrong direction, it really concerns me. And I'm wondering what data and that, that would indicate the drivers of that to, to the, the health service and, and what we see would likely change. Because, you know, we've got a number of facilities that have got gyms in them. You know, if we were opening them up and social prescribing, perhaps a bit of light exercise with a decent coach, keeping people engaged, people's life expectancy would be a bit better. It's a poor indication or a poor reflection on the Scottish government that things are moving in the wrong direction by such a dramatic amount. It's almost like we should be lobbying to reduce the pension age so as if people have a good few years or reasonable quality of life before they pass away, when you're looking at them coming down. So what statistics have we seen in other areas? What are the driving factors that are driving Dundee to, to a worse position than it is at the moment? Is there any indication that the, the number of GP practices that are handed back their keys making it more difficult for an individual to get an appointment via a health practitioner, having an effect on people's quality of life? It's almost like, you know, you've got to get through the barriers of the person on reception before you're getting to talk to a doctor, or you've got to tell them that you're seriously, seriously unwell before you broke that down. So what, what are the drivers that are here? And of course, you know, whilst working in partnership with health, you know, you'll get a, you'll get a reminder for the health service that if you don't make a certain appointment, that will cost you £150. And higher, or it'll cost the health service £150. Perhaps a scan, it's a lot more than that. And people will be missing appointments. So what would, what would do to get them to appointments, you know, in, in partnership with health? And, you know, what we're doing to seriously address the inequalities and change this route?
Yeah, thanks, question. Kevin, there's a couple of questions within that. A couple of quick comments. So I'm, I'm happy to co-sign a later, a letter with you. I think I'm delighted to hear that you're up for the Volvic, the pensions and, and liability and also the, the age to the Scottish parliament. So fantastic to hear that. And a couple of points that you made there in the latter stages of your contribution, which I think are probably more appropriate directed to NHS T side rather than any of the members of the Health and Social Care Partnership, but I'll allow them to, to respond to the points that you make in any way they so wish. So Vicky, if I can come to you first and then we'll see if Kevin wants to come back in. Thanks.
Yes, thanks very much. And there may be other members of the team who want to contribute in terms of what the underlying features of the changes in life expectancy are. But I guess I can comment on what's presenting in our system for health and social care support. And what we are seeing is in effect frailty appearing across the age profile of the Dundee population. And what that essentially means is we have people with more than one condition that need our services and need additional support for becoming quite frail and unwell on a number of occasions. So that seems to be presenting across a younger population that we've seen before. And we work quite closely in combination with public health colleagues to see what we can do to understand what lies beneath that and what the main features are or the main contributing factors are across the city. And that therefore then flows into all of the work we're doing across the strategic plan in terms of improving health and trying to reduce those inequalities. So I don't know if any other members of the team want to come in on that. Just in terms of appointments, convener, you're, you're correct in saying that potentially we could get a briefing from NHS T side and on that. But I know that they use a, a number of different functions in terms of reminders for appointments so that they can help reduce the do not attend rates, which is, is the terminology which they use to ensure that we have people in the right place and attending appointments. So we also, in a number of service areas, have open access arrangements for those people who struggle, obviously, to remember appointments and those people that don't necessarily have structure to their lives that, that you might ordinarily expect. So we do quite a lot to make sure that we're bringing the services to the people who need it most. But I see Catherine's got her hand up, so she may wish to come in, particularly on the issue around the changing life expectancy figures.
Thanks, Vicky. Catherine?
Thank you, Vicky. So in terms of social determinants of health, there's some information reflected in the plan around that and the links to poverty and social deprivation, education, access to healthcare, the kind of built environment that people live in and sort of social and community contexts as well. So there's a lot of, of the determinants of health which set out with immediate scope with IGB and the partnership. But I think that's why we have reflected in that final priority in the plan, that kind of working together and that need for us to work across the whole system to address some of those social determinants. Because whilst we have a really important part to play in IGB and the, and the Health and Social Care Partnership, that is not something that we'll be able to achieve alone and, and we need to continue to collaborate round about. But, you know, having run through those social determinants, you'll see where that links hopefully to the health inequalities priority, the one around self-care and helping communities and individuals to care for their own health and wellbeing at an earlier stage. And open door being a big aspect around access to services and trying to kind of support particularly targeted at, at people with the highest health needs who perhaps are not accessing the services they need at an earlier stage and provide that crisis. But of course, all of that's challenging to monitor and report on. So as well as looking at life expectancy, we also look at healthy life expectancy because it's about quality of life as well as length of life. And we are working with our partners in NHS T side, Public Health Scotland, on in performance measures around the, the plan. So we have some national measures we must report on, but we don't necessarily feel they're sufficient to kind of represent that whole range of, of kind of strategic shifts that are within the plan. And that will again have to be a partnership effort in terms of the contribution we can all make to, to measuring and reporting against some of that progress.
Thanks, Catherine. I can see Diane wants to come in as well. Just to say one further thing, I suppose, in terms of clearly, by the time it becomes a health matter, it's in, in some respects too late. What we want to do is early prevention and get upstream of these issues to make sure that people aren't finding themselves in that ill health situation as well. And you alluded to a couple of the, the factors that come into play there. I think it's also important to perhaps emphasise and correct me if I'm wrong, but these are not particular to Dundee in terms of the trend. My understanding is across the UK, so just to, to be very clear on that. As well as in other western countries such as the US, there has been a decline in the life expectancy rate, particularly in the post-COVID years. So I, I, I wouldn't want anybody to go away or there to be a suggestion from this committee that somehow Dundee is an outlier. And in that respect, I think, yes, we've got a lot of work to do. We acknowledge that. We understand the issues of social deprivation and health inequalities have been, you know, in existence longer than I've been alive and, and living in this city. But we're trying to do something about that. But let's not make it sound, and I know that wasn't the intention, that Dundee somehow is different from other areas because it isn't. And this is a national trend and one that we all want to get to grips with. Diane?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I, Billy Keenan, in relation to primary care, I think it's too early at this stage to. Really have an understanding of the impact of some of our closures across our general practice. Population. We do know though that Dundee is, is not unique. In the issues that it has in terms of the pressures across general practice, both in relation to. The changing profile of the staffing there, but equally in relation to the capacity and the amount of people presenting post-COVID. Particularly as been described already in relation to complexity of need and the point at which people are presenting. One of the big issues, and I think what we're trying to do is to consider how people can and do view. The, the receptionist staff, because we're now looking at much more multidisciplinary team that staff can actually do their people too, which means they get. Seen by an expert in that field. But this perception of not sharing information with receptions. Quite often heats that and pizza and stops people from getting to where they need to be. So we recognise that's one of the areas of work that we need to focus on over the next year. Is actually how we can get that initial response to people phoning up, seeking support and help. An assessment actually directed to the right place and people comfortable with sharing that information. That move away from it being a receptionist, but actually someone who can help coordinate and support care. So that has to be one of our focuses, but we are monitoring and watching the impact of our closures, which we have been able to absorb up to now into other practices. Thank you.
Thanks, Diane. Kevin?
Can be there. See, I've heard a lot within that about the health service need to make a contribution towards things. And, and I'm wondering how we draw that out. Because clearly we've got to look at, you know, I'm not looking at any further than Dundee. But, you know, the, the figures have never been great for Dundee and I haven't seen them improving. And effectively here we've got worse. So, you know, and for social prescribing and, and we've got, we as a council have facilities that I believe are. Well underutilized and could be used for more social prescribing. It doesn't appear to be happening. So how do we kick the doors of the health service open to make that happen? If that's the bit that would make a real difference to somebody's quality of life and level of fitness. In later years and stop presenting with a number of different conditions.
Thanks very much. I'm, I'm not sure that, well, I'll, I'll maybe ask officers to comment generally about representations to the NHS rather than giving them a kicking. As you described. So I think there's a number of ways we do that. And it's probably worth mentioning that I'm also happy. If any elected members want to bring issues with me as a board member of NHS T side, for me to be able to reflect them in conversations as I do. On a frequent basis. And of course, the Health and Social Care, the Integration Partnership is in partnership with Dundee City Council and the I G B generally. Dave was at the last NHS board meeting, so there is a, a number of ways in which we can make representations. But Dave will bring you in and then I'll move on to Heather. So Dave.
Yes, thanks, Convenor. Just, just in relation to the social prescribing side of things. We have got quite a number of social prescribers that are kind of funded through jointly through both the council and through NHS. Funding through our integrated budget. And we have social prescribing, social prescribers which cover every GP practice. And they're not, not everybody's going to dedicate it, but we've got enough coverage to kind of make sure the city has got social prescribers each, each one. And a lot of the activity that they undertake is geared towards exactly as you're, as you're suggesting in terms of kind of utilizing the resources. And facilities that the city has. So just to give that assurance that it's, it's something that is actually happening. Obviously, we would want to do a lot more of, but as our funding is kind of, is restricted in that.
Thanks very much, Dave. Heather?
Thank you, convenor. I'm, my, I think my question's to Catherine, who alluded to what I'm going to be talking about. And we've heard from a lot of different agencies, especially the Scottish Community Development Centre, that thirteen years of Tory austerity has definitely taken its toll. On people's long, long-term life expectancy. And we know that over the last few years, people have been experiencing real hardship through COVID. Food charity, emergency provisions of food, huge amounts of stress. And so what I was wanting to ask Catherine about was, we know that life expectancy has reduced. But the staggering figures from a couple of public health events that I have been at is that healthy life expectancy is. And the gap between a healthy life expectancy and an unhealthy life expectancy is the largest it's ever been. So that if you are a man living in one of the wealthiest areas of Scotland, you can expect to live to sixty-nine. Before you start becoming ill. But if you're a man living in one of the poorest areas of Scotland, like six out of eight of our wards. You can expect to live to forty-five before you start to become ill, which is staggering. And for a woman, the, the age is forty-eight. So I'd be really interested, Catherine, to find out if we've got any analysis specific to Dundee. About that gap between healthy and unhealthy life expectancy, which is so stark and staggering. And also hearing more, not necessarily in this meeting, but I'd really like to think of ways that we can address that. Certainly around the provision of food and support.
Thanks for the question, Heather. Catherine?
Um, yeah, so we are able to, to have local information around that with our colleagues in Public Health Scotland. I don't have it to hand. Councillor Anderson, but I'm more than happy to go and speak with colleagues and see if we can provide a summary of the most recently available information. And it is a really important measure. I think members of the public that we engage with were very clear with us about. The fact that it's not about just about living longer, it's about living longer in good health and having a good quality of life. So alongside some of the statistical things that we will obviously measure and report. I think we also are keen to find ways to capture more of the kinds of things that, that are in the annual report about the impact on people's lives and what that feels like in terms of. You know, their day-to-day health and wellbeing and, and what that means for them in terms of making a real difference for them and their families. Alongside some of that statistical information. So we've got that more rounded picture, which has always been a challenge for us to do at scale. And I think the annual report this year picks up some good examples of evidence in that. And, and a different way from the statistical information perhaps does as well.
Thanks, Catherine. Thanks for the question, Heather. Charlie next?
Yeah, I'd like to begin by talking about the texting of reminders for your appointments. I'm really grateful for that service because I'm not very good with diaries. So on Monday, I was on the twenty-eight bus heading towards the city centre. When my phone was telling me I should be at nine wells for a scan. So I think that it's important that we promote that service. I think it's really, really good. And research has indicated that it's cut down significantly, the number of missed appointments. I'd also like to, to, to kind of congratulate the authors of the report. When I read this report, it's one of the most brutally frank. Reports I think I've ever seen at committee in all the years I've been on the committee, which isn't too many. And the, the, there's no attempt at spin. There's no attempt to, this is what we are doing and we're kind of mitigating against this. It's just here are the facts, here are the challenges. And I liked the way that it then goes on to match with the, the plan itself. So you could actually see the linkages between the issues we're having and the, the, what they're saying in the plan. So I'd like to. Congratulate the people who put this together. I think it's a really decent piece of work. And I think it's one of the most illuminating and depressing reports I've seen before committee because it is depressing. And as somebody who kind of represents a world of multiple deprivation. I see a lot of these things on a daily basis. And the, I, the, the notion that people. At, in their late forties are suffering from multiple illnesses. Whereas in other parts of the city, that's maybe the mid-sixties is to me. That, that, that's alarming. And but I see it on a daily basis. And it's how do we make the people understand the contact points? And I think that's why I come back to the, the text messaging. What contact points do people have? To say to them, you really should be looking after yourself. Because I know, for example, in the Lawheard. Um, we have got some of the lowest take-ups of heart scans in the city. And yet we've got proportionally higher people, higher number of people that have got kind of heart problems. So I think that what this report does is say, you know, here it is. And this is, there's no, nobody trying to shame anybody for it. This is the actual evidence from the ground. And I think it's really welcome to have such evidence. But I like the way that you actually then go on to in page eighty-five. Start to link it with some of the issues and priorities and actions that you're going to be taking.
Thanks for your comment, Charlie. And those comments are appreciated in terms of the report and the contents. And obviously the text messaging services NHS T side, but again, your points well made. I think that's the point, isn't it? When we talk about health and social care partnership, it isn't just about the direct services. It's about how they interact with other elements of service. And there's a lot of good work tackling poverty, fuel poverty. Food, as has been mentioned, there's green health prescribing and all of these sit within different functions, et cetera, but are contributing towards the. The key objective for all of us, which is for people to live healthier, wealthier and better lives generally. Ken, I think you'll be the last comment on this item.
Yep, I'm the, I'm probably the last speaker of the night, actually. And this is the last item on the agenda. And yeah, I really liked what the comments that Charlie just made about how honest this document is and how it links into the. The ten-year strategic plan, which has, has broken up into short-term changes. We need to make medium-term and longer-term changes. So we haven't just got a ten-year target for everything. We're looking at incremental steps to improve the health and, health and social care. Provision for, for, for the citizens of Dundee. And so much work has gone into it. So I'd like to thank. All, all the staff who, most of them are, are here, well, the senior ones anyway, who, who worked so, so hard on this. And we really have to make sure that we pursue the changes that we know we need to make. Over the next ten years with these incremental steps also that I mentioned. The reason I actually wanted to comment at first was basically. Bailey Keenan mentioned social prescribing and seemed to be indicating. That, you know, there wasn't a sufficient take-up of that because there was barriers in the way. And I, I don't know anything about that. And I can't find it in the report, but I do know that the report's somewhere. Or whether it's in the report or in the text. Of, of the, the, the motion tonight. But I think there was a thousand plus referrals made via social prescribing last year. We've actually seen a massive expansion of that. I see Jax is shaking her head, but that, that's the figure that I remember from the report. Maybe one of the, the officers. Could comment on that. But I, I see that actually as a great success. So one more thing that I just wanted to, to pick up on, because I hear people complaining about this a lot and there's been mention about it. Tonight is the difficulty people have phoning their GP and they don't like speaking to the receptionists and giving them. But they consider it to be private medical information. I can understand that. But, you know, we don't think twice when we phone NHS twenty-four. When they ask, well, can you tell me what the problem is? We don't think twice about. About saying to the people on the other end of the line what the problem is. And they're effectively. Fulfilling the same role as a, a receptionist and a, and a GP surgery does. So at the I G B last week. We were discussing this and David Shaw, who's our general practitioner sits on the I G B. He said that, yeah, there's a lot of thinking going on about this, about how to change people's attitudes. And even, even the name. So I think the term that's been bandied around at the moment, it's a possible replacement for receptionist is. Health navigator. So you won't be speaking to health navigator anymore. You'll be speaking to someone who actually has a. Pretty in-depth knowledge of the health system and will know who it's best for you to see in, in, in the practice. So. Yeah, there's some movement on that because it does seem to be a big issue. So thanks for letting me in, convenor. And thanks again to all the staff who work so hard.
Thanks very much, Karen. Again, I'm sure the comments will be reflected back to staff. And I'm, I'm pretty sure you've probably made them at the, the I G B as well. And you had a specific question just in relation to those figures that you referenced. And I don't know. And Vicky, Diane, Catherine, if anybody is able to respond or perhaps you can follow up after the meeting.
I think I'd prefer just to follow up after the meeting unless Catherine has literally the information at fingertips. So.
Yeah, so the annual report in one of the additions refers to the social prescribing service having dealt with nine hundred and forty-four referrals across the four GP clustered areas. But obviously that's a high level figure. So if members are interested, we could get some further breakdowns of that and provide them to, to all members.
Thanks very much, Catherine. Okay, final word and then I will move on. Well, I won't move on because that'll be the end of the committee, Jax. Final word.
Oh yeah, thanks. I was going to comment and I wasn't going to comment. But just following on from the talk of GP receptionists. Having worked in GP practices throughout Dundee and Angus, that these people are not just receptionists, they do. I don't know if navigate the words is the word that I would like to use, but the. Pantryage the calls, everything's in strict medical confidence. But the more information these people have, they could direct you quickly to the. The health professional or allied health professional that you need to speak to, whether that's a physio. Because you don't need to see the doctor, whether it's an A N P, a phlebotomist or indeed a doctor. And so the, these are really important people within primary care teams. That I don't want them to see. Years ago, we used to see them as the gatekeeper to the doctors. You know, they kept everybody out, but they're not. They want you to be seen as quickly by the right person. If I could go back to Ken's comment about social prescribing. I've had countless barriers because people are at home and they cannot attend for social prescribing. They cannot attend the practice or where these social prescribers are to even kind of be assessed and work together to, to get a. Plan or a program and together to work with as the social prescribers can't go to them. But also, I don't, community nursing, I know it's NHS T side, but we are a big part of Dundee Health Social Care Partnership. The social carers is involved there, the OTs that are involved there and the community nurses, they do everything they can to. While we're not. Life expectancy is not going to be increased sometimes by the time people become involved with these services. However, we could help these people have the optimum health that's available to them by all working together. And then district nurses, we used to have, who are specialist nurses, who will assess people in their own homes. Plan their care, empower these people. We used to have in Dundee twenty-six full-time equivalent nurses. District nurses running teams right across. We've now got six full-time equivalents. The skill mix is totally. Devastated as new teams. To, to tick box and to hit the other things like frailty and move on to, to other. To other areas of nursing to keep people out of accident and emergency and acute admissions. But I just want to kind of sing the praises of Dundee Health and Social Care Partnership. And NHS T side as far as we can, but there is lots of work being done, more joined up working for. Needs to be done as well, but we can't. I can't think of the word now, you know, not see the impact that this team of health professionals make on people's everyday lives. Sorry.
No, it's all right. And you're speaking from a position of knowledge, I suppose, as well, Jack. So thank you very much for your comments. And again, I'm sure they'll be reflected. Then we all recognise that there are huge challenges. Again, through every conversation, we've recognised that. But we've got a committed workforce and staff that really want to improve lives. And I think we should probably finish on that note. Helen, thank you for letting us know. I didn't see any notification, but I don't see George back in. But. On the basis that there's no further contributions at this point, can I take this item as agreed? Thank you very much. That is all the business. Have a tremendous week and I shall see you very soon. Take care, everyone. Cheers.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Thank you.